Regular meeting order for January the 28th of 2025. I'd like to invite everybody to stand as we have invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Sheriff, you do the invocation.
Ms. Bowhead. Our Father, thank you so much for allowing us to come here today for the betterment of our community. I pray that you give these men and women the wisdom and guidance that they need to make proper decisions for our community. And God, I ask that you be with the families that have lost here recently. God, I pray that you give them peace beyond all understanding and be with those in Covington County and help us to be a better, better community for you. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Please, Jordan, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. At this time, we have no scheduled public hearings. We have no public comments from citizens as scheduled. We do have an award presentation from the sheriff for a life-saving award.
It is a wonderful opportunity to be able to present these awards to our officers. They are, they work diligently and all officers that work for the sheriff's office are second to none. Sometimes we get put in a position where you're at the right spot at the right time. And, Sergeant Gilbert, would you come up here? And Chief Grimes, you come up here? Sergeant Gilbert displayed some heroism just this last month and it needs to be recognized. And the citation reads as follows. "On January the 14th, Sergeant Houston Gilbert demonstrated exceptional bravery, composure, and quick thinking in a life-or-death situation that saved the life of an infant child. Responding to a report of a domestic disturbance on Holly Luke Road in Op., Sergeant Gilbert -- I'm sorry. Sergeant Gilbert observed a frantic mother holding her choking infant as she emerged from the residence. Without hesitation, Sergeant Gilbert took immediate action. With a calm and steady hand, he removed the infant from the mother's arms, delivered back blows, and with moments, the infant, once purple and unresponsive, began to cry and breathe again. Sergeant Gilbert's swift and decisive response in this critical moment exemplified the highest standards of service, saving a young life and offering comfort to a family in distress. His actions reflect not only his professional skill but also his unwavering commitment to protecting and preserving life, no matter the circumstance. For his courage, dedication, and life-saving actions, Sergeant Houston Gilbert is hereby awarded the Covington County Sheriff's Life Saving Medal."
Thank you, Sheriff.
I appreciate it.
We have, let's see, public comments from other elected officials or appointed officials. Let's go sheriff in at this time.
Uh, actually, yes. I want to thank the county commission and the road department for all the help that they had during the snowstorm of '25 because I think that's what it's going to go down in history as. And we were very fortunate not to suffer any major accidents or anything during this time. And I just think everything went off just like, just like it should have, should have went off, and I thank y'all.
Thank you, Sheriff. Lynn?
I don't really have a -- well, I just want to do have a proposed, uh, organization chart again for our employees and what I think we need. You'll see in the, in this that we have a possible second crew for bush hogging is really the main thing and also maybe three positions again for what we discussed yesterday at the workshop as far as the, um, the right-of-way maintenance crew. So if y'all just, that's just for y'all to look at. I think it adds maybe 10 or 11 positions to what we have, but that's just, I want y'all to look at, that's our wish, that's our wish list, we can get that. But as far as that goes, again, again, I think the, we waited a day for, on the storm to get our crews out because the snow was, was already there. And once it finally, the initial melt started going, we cut out there and tried to get the stubborn ice off the roads, so, but I think everything went good. It definitely safe enough our roads, so. But we're about out working again today. Things are still wet. I've got loggers on wet dirt roads right now. I'm fighting that right now. One's already called, asked if I could bring a load of rock because it's a slick, some slick spots down in the south end of county with some rock on some roads this morning. But we're, just business as usual. We're hoping to get back, we'll start getting some dirt hauling. We've still got some washes and stuff that need to get fixed on our side of our roads. But other than that, it's like a business as usual right now.
And as you said, please be patient with the dirt roads. We can't grade them right now because they're so wet.
No. I talked to a landowner yesterday that called around the headquarter camp road needing some rock on, likely to get some rock on that road down there, but it's, it's just too wet right now. I can't do anything with it until it dries out a little bit, so, yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Susan? Anything this time?
There was a discussion about FEMA declared disaster, and I worked on that yesterday. And we did get pretty close for the county level, but the state is nowhere close to the 9.8 million, so there will not be any FEMA assistance for the snow. But I think everything went well. Also, we will have an after-action meeting, after the commission meeting, to talk about the event and how it worked and things that we can improve on, things that need to be changed. So we're going to have that meeting after this commission meeting.
And I want to say, I think yesterday I mentioned the sheriff department, road department, and I didn't really honestly mention you and Kyle as much, and I may have, but thank y'all for being
You're welcome.
-- being available and doing what y'all did during this whole situation also.
It's our job. That's what we do.
Tammy?
Everything's good. We have all new, are ready to roll. We have one that stages coming to exam for alternator and net, but good.
Good deal. We also have here Jacob Morgan with the Covington County Economic Development. Jacob, don't mind coming up there a minute, buddy. I know we had some pretty, pretty good site news down in Florida that we was going to announce last week that kind of got postponed to a, to a minor dust in the snow, so give us a quick update with the economic development.
That's the truth. And, and I don't mind going over that a little bit now for some of y'all may, may have heard. But a couple of things, when you talk about the future of our area, this is really good. Through the state, they have a program called the Seeds Act, and that is where they help us in other rural areas that qualify, paying basically three-quarters of the cost to acquire new property or any work that would need to be done on that property. And we have secured an option on 100 acres out where 107 and 55 intersect in red level to develop for the future. When you're getting it three-quarters off price, it's a pretty good deal, so that, that's really good, and we're going to be developing that site for the future. And also, just briefly, just to tell you about basically just having to put yourself in the right position and be in the right place at the right time, it was back, this has all happened since Thanksgiving. Had a gentleman named Andy Johnson that contacted me. I woke up one morning and he told me he needed a 100 acres in Florella, and I didn't know that was going to be doable or not, but we were able to find it, thank goodness, and secured that. And if you, if you've been out to their industrial park lately, you can see they've done a lot of work out there, turned over a lot of dirt. And Sims Bark is the name of this company, and they work hand-in-hand with Lowe's. They, anywhere Lowe's has stores, they, their mulch, all that kind of stuff, if they're short on getting it, they get these guys to build a plant there. And this plant will be supplying to one over in Enterprise and a lot down in Florida and a few more in Alabama and may even help us get a Lowe's. He, he told me he thought we were very well in the market for it. But, so you got Sims Bark that's going to be hiring up to 40 people. They'll be on 100 acres out there. They pay $15 an hour right out of high school, give them health insurance and retirement benefits, so it's, it's a wonderful asset in our county. And again, they have not asked for a thing. And it's always good working with a company that's got their stuff together. And so this is, this has just been a great thing and expedient and all, all that's held us up is announced because of the weather, but we're, we're going to do that formally here very soon, and we are, we are so excited to, to get them started, and it's just going to be a great addition to the county and a great addition to Florella. And because of that, Alabama Power is coming onto our board. I think they see we making, be a pretty big benefit to them because that's their service territory, so that was good to have. We appreciated that. And we also, out there in that industrial park, there is another business, I can't talk about publicly yet, but they, they have bought or have been in the process of buying a vacant building out there that they'll be going in. So that, that industrial park in the past two years has really cranked up, so that's, that's, that's a great thing. And so we're, we're really excited about that. We are actively, of course, still recruiting retail for all our towns and cities. I'll be doing a little bit of that this week. Any, anything that, you're, you're more than welcome. If there's a certain store or something that you think an area could use, if I hadn't already thought about it, I'd be more than welcome to, to talk to them again, but I, I try to talk and deal with everybody, so that's, that's something that's important to us, and hopefully with the new administration, we'll, we'll see some more opportunities coming. Sim plot down there and up, they're doing well. Got a, that fertilizer company, I think they've got, going to have 16 people working down there. That's a good thing. Hopefully, they can continue to expand and grow. And I know, I tell you, this manufacturing, as you all may know, is about to really ramp up, and that's a great thing. And I, and when you literally, with, with Sims Bark, literally, like I said, that was back during Thanksgiving, he told me when I was asking, I mean, everything looked good, everything looked great, but he literally told me he was waiting to see how the election turns out, and if it had gone another way, we may not have them. So that's how important th- those kind of things are. And they actually, they got like 15 or 16 locations nationally. They're all over, so we're glad, we're glad to have them, looking forward to, to getting them open and getting them off the ground. Their biggest business times during the spring when people are doing their flower beds and everything, so they've been, they've been in a hurry to get going. And other than that, we're just, we're just plugging along unless anybody's got any questions.
Jacob, now I just want to say thank you for what you've done with that. I know me and you talked, and I talked a lot with Lynn and the other commissioners as this was going on, trying to assist you any way we could to get that business.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
I, I really appreciate you because I know you were on edge two or three times when I talked to you about, about finishing up the deal and securing it, so really and truthfully, I appreciate what you've done to help us with that.
Yes, sir. Thank you all. Thank you, Commissioner, for the support. Y'all, y'all great, and I know I can call on you anytime.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Jacob, can we get a list of who's on the board? You said Alabama Power was going.
Yes, sir.
Can we get a current list?
You can. We can. Be glad to. All right. Thank you all.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob.
Our commission, as you go on down, we come to the consent agenda, there's nothing under it today, but when you get to old business, we have considered funding for the Three Knots Museum. That is something Ms. Sue Bass Wilson come up here and ask us about, uh, I guess a couple of workshops ago.
Workshop previous.
Previous, prior, not this, like, yesterday, but one before, okay. Karen does some digging. I think the last time we give a contribution to them was a $5,000 contribution that come through the contingency fund.
That's correct.
I'm open for anything that y'all are interested in or?
I'm going to suggest that we cut that out. I mean, not that much, for the reason being that we discussed yesterday that we need to do this in budget year time, not just in the middle of a year. I hate that it is what it is, and we may can go to that amount, but I would like to see that cut maybe in half. And the other reasoning for that is because I feel like down the road, we're going to have other towns that have these same groups that are going to come to us for money, and we need to be able to sit down with our budgets and budget out what we can afford for each group, rather than just giving this to one, and then when the other one comes along, we'll have to give the same, or I feel like we'd have to. So that's my suggestion.
Feel like you have an obligation once you do one.
Yes, yes. So I'd suggest that we cut it. Anybody? Any comment? I'll ask.
I, I think you ran on. I think we need to know, we need to have a set fund
I do, too.
Of what we're going to give away to these groups and
I, we'd love to give whatever we could to every
Exactly.
Organization, you know, at, at some point, you know, we've got to pull everything back and, and look at what we're doing.
I was having a discussion this morning, thank you, Karen, but I think Morgan had made the mention that we need to send out something to these organizations, say, hey, if you want something from us, you need to let us know by such-and-such day.
Absolutely.
This is the last day
Yeah.
that we will take applications, or even call it, for these fundings. That way to be early enough, we can look at it when we do do our budget.
Absolutely. I agree.
So would you like to put that in the form of a motion?
I would like to put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Ms. Holmes to
Hold on. Let me make sure I understand. You're making a motion that we have, so we're going from 5,000 to 2,500.
That's where I'm at. That's where I'm at, but now I'll take whatever y'all think. We'll, we'll go back.
No, I'm good with that. I just wanted to make sure what we were voting on.
Okay. We're voting that, and then, well, you want to do two?
We'll just, we'll look at the other.
Okay.
We'll, we'll talk about that in the workshop of how we need to, to progress with that situation.
So I'll second.
Okay. The motion is, Ms. Holmes wants to cut the, the 5,000 into 2,500 for this year. We have a second by Mr. Ben Corson. At this time, we have a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
We have one, no. And that'll be Mr. Robert Weaver. We talked about yesterday on a new business, the board positions expiring on the Covington County Industrial Development Board, which we had a lot of discussion on, then I think afterwards, someone was talking to attorney at different times about this board. I think what I would recommend is we go ahead and put the, the positions out to accept applications, but we still have a lot of stuff we're trying to answer with this, but if we have to have this board appointed, we have these people already sending in their applications. That would be my recommendation on that, but like I said, there's a lot of discussions still to be, to be taking place. But if we have to appoint this later on, we don't have to announce the applications later because these terms will expire in February, on February the 14th, it'll be late.
And we did decide that we only had two positions on the seven-man board, right?
That's right.
That only has five members on it right now.
But we're not responsible for the whole board. We're just only responsible for two.
That's correct. And like I said, there's a lot of discussion about this still, got to take place before, but just to make sure everything flows properly, if we have to reappoint to this board, that we have the applications that come in.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we accept the applications.
Have a motion from Mr. Corson.
A second.
Have a second from Ms. Holmes or Mr. Weaver, whichever you want to take. Call it, but all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the next thing was consideration of declaration for surplus of sheriff department equipment. Blake gave us a list of stuff that he would love to have surplus on Gov. deals. Yesterday, you had the chance to review that. Any questions for, for Blake at this time on it? If not, I entertain a motion to declare this surplus.
Make a motion to declare the surplus.
Have a motion by Mr. Robert Weaver.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tom McGahay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The next is the consideration of emergency weather preparedness resolution. That is a resolution we discussed yesterday that we had to do when we had to close the buildings and the county offices down. You have that resolution in front of you. I don't know if we've got it today, but we had it yesterday for you to review. At this time, I would love to have a motion to accept that resolution.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Have a motion from Robbie Weaver.
A second.
Have a second from Ms. Holmes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the next thing is consideration of amendment of manning chart workforce classification. This is the two we talked about yesterday that are the point A. What I'm, easiest way I can say this, the point A employees who's been up there is the maintenance and the clerk up there. We were talking about moving the maintenance position from the point A part to the arena. Still falls in front of Kevin Kennedy, his crew, but that gives us a maintenance person kind of down on the grounds. I think everybody, the guy, I've talked with the guy, he's fully interested in doing that. Very nice young man, very eager to work. So I would, I would take a recommendation on moving him down to the arena.
I'll make a motion to move him to the arena.
Have a motion from Ben Corson.
I'll second it.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I would like to meet this man.
Super-nice guy.
I would.
Ms. Karen has his number.
Okay.
He, he came up and met with me.
What's his name?
Jeffrey Mitchell.
Very, very, seemed to be very hardworking, eager, eager young man to
Right.
to keep, keep working.
And he does, he does drive a county vehicle.
He does.
That he will take home.
That's why, because of the maintenance having to be called out, they have the vehicle.
Okay, the next move would be to, from the lady from the point A, she's the clerk up there, over to the sheriff department. She's a part-time position. She has actually worked with the DTF before. Sheriff said he was okay with that, that move. I think you've talked with Ms. Lisa, right?
Liz.
Liz. I don't know why I want to call her Lisa. Liz, that's about that move, and I think she's interested in, in doing that. She feels, I think, really comfortable going to that because that's a position she's kind of been in before with knowing some of the law enforcement. I'll take a motion to move Ms. Liz over to the sheriff department. Make a motion.
A second.
Motion, a second, from Tom McGahay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the next thing is consider quote for the audio and video thing. I want to say let's hold off on that, and the reason being, we had several discussion yesterday about pulling our mics closer. Let's try that for a meeting or two and see if it, if it will work, talking more into them, and then if it doesn't, let's come back and revisit that because we've had several people that say that, but now I'm up to whatever y'all want to do this morning with it. Your suggestion.
How old is this, this system we have and cameras that don't work, inoperable?
I have no idea on that. It's been here longer than that.
It's been 20 years from what I heard. It was in here prior to Karen being here.
I know we listened yesterday to the, everything about it, but are the chief complaints from the video or from the audio portion? What, where are we getting the most?
The, the complaints that I've had that people have mentioned to me has been from the audio.
Okay.
And then, like I said, some of them saying yesterday, if you pull your mics closer, and I'm trying to sit a little closer and talk a little louder today.
I forgot about it. It's, well
And that's be something we all have to get used to doing
Because
and see if it makes a difference.
Right. But, well, why I say that is, the times I've ever watched the videos, you know, it's at a distance, but that's probably good
For some of us.
For some of us. So I, I didn't see that as being a problem. Now, I don't know about the, you know, this is hard to understand, I realize that, but you may be right in that we're not actually speaking into the microphone, but I know we discussed getting a different type of microphone.
We did.
Not just that one, but in, but other things as well. So I vote, I put in, I guess it has to be on a motion, that we table it until the next meeting.
I have a motion from Ms. Holmes.
Where we all have time to talk about it.
To table this until the next meeting?
Yes.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Oh, I'm sorry. See, that's why I don't like it up here because I bump it. All right. Next thing is any reports from staff. I know we just talked to y'all. Like I said, we really appreciate our whole staff of what y'all done during this, this little lot dust in the snow we had in Covington County. The dedication and hard work really, really, really stands out to me of how dedicated our employees are for this county. Anybody from our staff have anything? Eric? Didn't mention you this morning, buddy, I'm sorry.
The email changeover was completed yesterday, which included all commissioners, so we are 100% changeover new emails.
But you still can receive your emails from your old
Correct. Yes, if somebody still emails your @covecounty, it does still deliver, but when you reply, it'll show the new .gov.
Okay.
How long will that work that way?
Indefinitely. We, I have no plan to turn it off until at least a year. That way it gets everybody in the habit of replying back to your new .gov, so minimum of a year.
And then as far as the, I think, you know, I may have discussed on the phone where you have to put in the exact email, that still remains .
No, that number will be . It'll not change to .gov. You just, for phones that already have the email on there, you don't have to do it, I think, at all. Like, if you go get a new phone, then yes, you have to put in .gov.
Okay.
Where your existing devices, it just changes automatically.
Okay.
Thank you, Eric. Rachel? Alan, I see y'all sitting in there today. Good to see your faces here.
I have one more thing.
All right, Ms. Lynn, come on up, buddy.
Now, our, the Alabama Forest Commission, you know, we have discussed the bridge application grant. That initiative for the logging efficiency, that, that is due March the 14th, it's a grant application up to 400,000. I still don't know what the exact matching fund amount is. I can't find anywhere in the literature that I've read so far that says what our commitment, what our, our matching funds would have to be. But I've already reached out to landowners, loggers, procurement, forestry procurement, registered foresters to get their input on the bridges because they, they travel the roads just as much as we do, but I know how it affects them more than what I might would see. So I've reached out for their input as well already. I reached out to about six, or I got hold of one yesterday, and he's reached out to about six different ones. He had their, their numbers that I wanted to get them to get a hold of. So that one's due March the 14th, so any input you would have as well. This is for weight-restricted bridges in rural areas with less than 2,500, which I think everybody in the, in Covington County would basically would meet that requirement. I mean, we don't have a community, I think, with any more than, besides the city of Ann Luson, that, that's not in bridges or op as well, so.
Well, Lynn and I had read, I know what we got that then, I think I shared it with all the commissioners live streaming, and I think it's been shared two or three times by everyone about it. Is that to replace existing bridges? Like to get them up to a higher weight capacity?
Yes, to get them to our weight-restricted bridges up to where it's, and it's for logging efficiency. The state legislator and Governor Kay Ivey put forth this initiative to help the forest commissioner to get this out, to do that. And also our rebuild, that $10 million pot of money that we always supply for every year is due like in, I think, like in 20 days or so, and we're working on estimates for things that the ARPA did not cover, and I'll take your input as well on anything else. I think that, that grant application's $250,000 on the end, so. And whatever, as far as the logging, I think everything goes back. If you have an underrun, it goes back to the, there, whereas the rebuild, whatever we get, and we have an underrun, that stays in our coffers. It stays with us. So, but we try to hit estimates pretty close to get that, to make, to get the best out of that money. We want, we want to spend that money when we can get it, so. But anyway, that's the two applications we're pursuing right now over the next month and a half.
Okay.
Will be those two. So just to give you a heads up on that. But any input on the bridges, we would be welcome to take that.
Ms. Holmes?
I do. Um, you know, I think we've already talked about this, but just in case you forgot, uh, Lee County engineer was who presented that at conference. So I would think that he probably had the information you're looking for.
Yeah, as far as, I just, I just, we saw, I read this yesterday.
The matching of mail, yeah, that's what it was.
Yeah, I just hadn't dove, dove into enough to see what it is.
But maybe call him or get Ron to and see where we're at, uh, and if you can't find a bridge, I know plenty of them.
I got, we got plenty, I got, I got, actually, I got a map I can give each of you, I think you may have already seen it, but, uh, we have a, our weight-restricted map, um, and we're just looking at those, I've already got a few picked out myself, I was trying to get a general consensus, especially from logging community, since this, what this is for, that we can kind of work together and get one for them.
I have the map, you want to show it?
You got it with you?
I do.
Well, anyway, that's.
I mean, you can see where the redoing some of these bridges, replacing whatever to bring up the weight limit would be beneficial than just that, because at one time, the, the logger.
I think it's interesting.
Might come out of this area, and if he could go over this bridge, he could be over on the, the asphalt and a half a mile, where he can't go over that bridge, so he's got to go this way and just mess up three miles of dirt, right?
Right, no, this right here is our, our maintenance, this is our maintenance on, on section loss here, but this, this, these are some of our weight-restricted bridges.
Those, those are the ones Ron gave me yesterday, and he said that was, he explained to me, in case I didn't know, that red was the worst.
Yes, it is, these are, these are.
This coincides.
This map is, it's not necessarily the, the weight-restricted bridge, I have this one represent the work that maintenance work needs to be done.
Coincides with this, correct?
The stuff you'd already gave us.
But we have several weight-restricted bridges in the county, and so any grant we can get to place these to funding is limited on what we have here, we'll receive from.
And it would also benefit the, uh, garbage pickup.
That's what I was about to say, and we talked about these two cats as well. That bus has to go across.
School bus.
One of these bridges, and the school buses.
There's a lot of benefits of this, so y'all are actively pursuing this.
Like I said, it's due the fourteenth of March on the, uh, the rural, uh, bridge grant, uh, for the forest commission, and the rebuild is, I think, the twelfth of February, I believe it's the twelfth of February, when I was due, so, right, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Commissioners, anything? You know, this time?
Yes, yeah, always may. Uh, Cancer Free is Saturday in Florella, if you've never been, it's absolutely a great event. Uh, it, of course, supports a great cause, I did have the numbers over the course of years that they've actually been doing it, the amount of money that's been raised, which was just for me unbelievable, and of course, I don't remember, so I'm not going to tell the wrong number.
But, Ms. Lynn, don't they take all that money from pretty much all local people?
They do, uh.
And that's how they help local individuals with this?
They do, they choose every year, I think it's maybe six, might be eight, I'm not real sure now where their numbers have gotten to, and it goes to those families.
And it's a very big event, like you said, if you've never been, it's, it's worth going, you see a lot of, a lot of good that's done, and a lot of good it can continue to do to these families.
Absolutely, it's an all-day event, uh, they start with a pancake breakfast, they have a five K, is it five K run? I think your sisters participated last year, and they were dressed up in their.
You do see some unique costumes.
They're pink costumes, that's all I can say, it was pink for breast cancer.
It was.
Uh, but it's, it's, it's really neat, if you've never been, and they have something all day long, so it's, it's a worthwhile cause.
I agree with that. Anything else? With nothing else on the agenda, I will make, I will take a motion that we adjourn. Tommy? Ben?